Council workshop, September 2nd, 2015, approximately 6:50 PM. To interview a board applicant. Thank you all for being here. Donnie Torock, if you would please, just take a seat over here. And if you would, very simple, just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest of being on this board, and then the board will ask you, the council will ask you some questions.
Certainly. I'll stand so you can see me. Sorry. I'm Donnie Torock. I moved here 11 years ago from Ohio. Since then, I've spent all that time in 32937, the zip code, except for three years when I was across the border in IHB. I had, for, geez, nine years, an IT services company where I maintained doctor's offices, networks. Since my daughter graduated high school and into college, I went back into financial. And I got back into insurance about three years ago with life insurance and annuities. A couple of months ago, I knocked out my property and casualty license, so I'm actively practicing in all areas in insurance now. I love it here. I'm looking to buy another house sometime very soon, of course, in 32937 in Satellite Beach. And I find this a place that I chose to live in, and I want to participate and make it the best that it can be. So with my background and some of my volunteering on some of the other boards and nonprofits that I do work with, I'm a good numbers guy. Seeing that you had an opening for the pension for the city employees that were non-pleased on fire, I thought it'd be a good place for me to possibly learn some opinions, meet some people, see what I could do to help the community.
Thank you very much. I'll open up for the council for questions.
Actually, that was going to be my question. I saw where retirement planning was important to you, so I was just trying to figure out, where did that come in, or what was your background in that, where you felt that you would be useful?
I was originally insured back in 99 to 2000. I found myself as a single dad with a nine-year-old, so things had to change. But yeah, it's very important for me, and one thing I do with the clients that I do have is plan for their longevity and their retirement, because people are living longer every day, and the last thing you need to do is outlive your retirement savings. So, yeah, so it's very important.
Other questions? Thursdays quarterly in the afternoon at 2:00. That's good with you.
I have a very open and fluid schedule. It's my job to make sure that I'm open at all times of day to meet with all kinds of people, so, yeah, it would not be an issue.
Thank you. And the way this process works is during the council meeting, come up towards the end of the meeting, it's an agenda item appointment to board. If you vote at that time, you're more than welcome to stay through the process, listen to our meeting, or we'll contact you on your appointment.
Okay.
Okay? And thank you very much for volunteering and helping our city.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll close this portion of the meeting, and I'll go to 7:00 and open up the council meeting. Good evening. I'd like to call to order a city council meeting of the City of Satellite Beach, September 2nd, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence and a pledge.
Yeah.
A pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here. At this time, we have a presentation of a proclamation recognizing September 11th. I've asked the chief to please read it. Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. President. Thank you. This okay? A proclamation on the lead-up to where ads is, we know that there are a bunch of them in there. September 11th, 2015 marks the 14th year anniversary of an unprovoked and sensational sacrifice terrorism on our homeland. Four civilian aircraft hijacked on September 11th, 2011, crashed into New York City, Pennsylvania, and Penney. And we will always remember the innocent lives of the US citizens and all heritage, as well as visiting citizens of foreign nations, perished as a result of those horrendous attacks meant terrorize our nation. And we remember the sacrifice of our civilians and military first responders who rushed into darkness to carry others in danger. We honor their bravery and courage with their quick and selfless actions. And on this somber day, we remind all those who wish our nation home that we stand united as one nation, ungodly, vigilant in our fight against terror, and determined to continue as a beacon of hope and freedom for people everywhere. And the invulnerable spirit of the American people will not tire, will not falter, and will not fail in fighting for the safety and security of our homeland. Congress has approved and requests that we observe September 11th as Patriot Day, a National Day of Service and Remembrance. Therefore, Mayor Frank T. Cuttino, Mayor Satellite Beach, for our kind of floor, does your manifesto for September 11th, 2015, as Patriot Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. I encourage all community to join in honoring and remembering the victims of September 11th, 2001, and pay tribute to the many heroes who protect and defend our great nation, and to the police and firefighters who keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it very much. At this time, I'll move on to Agenda Item 4, which is citizens' comments. This is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. The podium's open for non-agenda items.
Ron Jagudis, resident, Satellite Beach. Non-agenda item relates to the CRA, and perhaps on other functions of the city when we form, or rather, when the city goes out for bid for contracts. It seems that especially for one of the items, as far as choosing a representative for a sale of a certain property, I do believe that for some of these committees, there should be a consideration to have citizens on board on these committees to ensure or to attempt to have engagement with the community, rather than having just municipal employees handle it. It's a thought that needs to be considered going forward. I know there have been other committees that have had that, but these are important issues to our community, and community involvement is very important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The floor is still open at this time for non-agenda items. Here are none. I'll close the citizens' comments. Thank you for your comment. Move on to Agenda Item 5, city council comments.
I have none.
I have nothing, sorry.
On the 22nd, I attended the 7th Annual Blood Drive that Joanne Reagan, a Satellite Beach resident, has in remembrance of her husband, who passed away from leukemia. Joanne has been doing this blood drive for a long time, and at one point in time, the city partnered with her, and we still partner with her. We just don't have it at the Pelican Beach Clubhouse, because we kind of outgrew it. This year, Joanne had over 120 people that came to donate blood on the 22nd, and it's just great to be able to be a part of it. I've helped Joanne for seven years that she's been doing this. She does an awesome job of reaching out in our community and bringing to, you know, the attention of the needs of blood in our community. So I just want to thank Joanne for all she does for Satellite Beach, because this is the Satellite Beach Blood Drive. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. They have no comments. At this time, I'll move on to Agenda Item 6, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone, on September 12th, 2015, the Turtle Crawl 5K Run Walk, which is actually one of the largest races in Brevard County, will be held in Inthe Atlantic Nance Park. And this benefits the Sea Turtle Preservation Society and a group of diverse volunteers focused on helping sea turtles survive. And you can register at the website that I have in my city manager's report, but it's basically turtlecrawl.com. On September 19th, we will be hosting with the Space Coast EV Drivers, a celebration of National Electric Vehicle Week, which is an electric vehicle event at the David R. Schechter Community Center from 10:00 to 4:00 PM. And you can actually drive or ride in one of the electric cars, so they'll be displaying all of those. They had, when they were here, Tesla, I think it was called, Tesla, which was a pretty cool car. So it'll be, I think it'll be a very interesting event. For informational items, I wanted to make you aware that we received a $1,000 donation to the Community Paramedic Program this week from John and Sadie Baker. I have included their letters in attachment and a very nice complimentary letter of the services they received through our fire department. Most of you received a City of Palm Bay letter asking you to pass the resolution similar to what the City of Palm Bay did, which encourages the county to place an infrastructure sales tax on the ballot for voter approval, and this is intended for, to provide road maintenance funds countywide. I would rather we wait to discuss this as an agenda item until October 7th. We will be discussing this among managers, and I would like to get some more research done on that issue before we bring it to your, on your agenda, if you don't mind.
Courtney, on that, can I ask a question, please? Sorry to interrupt you. Can we find out a lot of information, how it would be distributed?
Yes. Yeah. So we are calling the county to get information on, you know, their estimates that they put in their Blue River Community Report, to ask them how they got to that number and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
We received a notice from Representative Rich Workman's office about the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, which was supposed to meet on September 23rd. It has now changed to September 22nd, because they inadvertently realized that it was on, Wednesday, September 23rd, was Yom Kippur, which is one of the holiest Jewish holidays. So to honor that, they moved that meeting to September 22nd. I did include in my report the four legislative priorities for you to review, and this is a write-up that we would be sending in to Representative Workman's office. That would include it in a binder that is given to each of the delegate members. So with your approval, I will send it off and schedule us to be there. I also would like your approval to have Councilman Osmer be our representative and speaker in presenting the priorities.
At this time, since it is an action item, I'll open it up for public comment.
Gail Abrams, resident, Satellite Beach. Is this event open to the public?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you. Any public comments still open to put on this action item? Here are none. Back to council. Is approval, consensus?
Consensus, yes, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, discuss, take action on moving forward with the request for qualifications for management and operation of the city skate park.
Basically, this is a request to approve our request for qualifications for the skate park management, and I'll let Carrie present the item.
Thank you. For quite some time now, we've been working to try to get exciting, new, innovative energy type events at the skate park, working with staff. It's very difficult with the staff that we have down there. They're usually on the younger side, don't have a skill set to pull programs off like big skate contests. So we've always gone out to the community and asked the businesses to help support that. Most recently, Villain Clothing Line ran a very successful skate contest for us about two weeks ago. So given that, we're hoping that if we were to secure a business to assist us at the skate park, develop programs, get some improvements down there, and kind of bring some new energy and life to that skate park, we feel we can end up with a facility that will be better utilized than it is today.
Questions, Karen? Karen, we talked a few times on this, and we spoke today. So this will go out for proposal, and then we can meet with them and discuss.
This is an RFQ, so this is just asking for their qualifications. When we look at their background and their staff qualifications and their business qualifications, then we would pick who we'd want to work with, then we would sit down and develop a proposal. So that would be brought to you. If we could not develop a proposal with that particular individual or a business, then we would go to the next proposal or next qualification. So it's, in our minds, better this way, because we feel that the RFQ allows the person who's responding to, kind of, for them to create and be creative, and if we did a request for proposal, it's kind of us creating that, rather than the business creating it. So we thought we'd get a broader product and a better, more creative response.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions from council? Just one.
Jim, this is a question for you regarding moving in this direction. Does the city's liability change in any way regarding the incidents or accidents that would help occur on that property that we could include as part of this process that we're going through?
Well, basically, as the owner of the property, just conceptually, if somebody gets hurt on the property, they're going to try and sue everybody anyway. The idea would be that you would have them have insurance to cover whatever incidents they, you know, basically, they have their own liability insurance, and the city would be an additional insured and those kinds of things.
Okay. That answers the question. Okay, thank you.
So a question related to that. When skate parks like baseball fields or soccer fields, aren't we covering under something the state has? Carrie, you were telling me today.
Yes, actually, the City of Satellite Beach, when skate parks were up and coming, and municipalities led the workforce to get the skate parks exempt from liability. We still have all the youth down there, all the skaters sign a waiver, but the city would have some state authority exemptions from liability due to one of their laws that they passed.
We just received legislation this past legislative session that took away even the need for waivers, so we no longer even need that.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, sir. That's good.
At this time, I'll open it up for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Floor is open. Here are none. Bring back to council. Council will have a motion.
So move to second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Brymer. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes, motion passes. Mary, thank you very much. I know we'll be hearing from you again on this. At this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing, discuss, take action on ordinance number 1103. Jim?
Ordinance number 1103, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, deleting the Town Center Mixed Use District and allowing mixed use as an accessory use in the commercial zoning district, revising the future land use map, and amending the future land use element of the 1998 Comprehensive Plan as amended October 1, 2014, based on the city's updated data and analysis of the Comprehensive Plan, revising and updating existing goals, objectives, and policies in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, authorizing transmittal of these amendments to the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, State Land Planning Council, and other applicable agencies for review and comment as required by Florida statutes, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing an effective date, the second reading of ordinance number 1103.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1103 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council?
Yes, sir.
This time, open it up for public comment on Agenda Item 8.
Ron Jagudis, resident, Satellite Beach. I have attended some of those meetings in regards to the Comprehensive Plan and bringing this forward. My question to all is, and I've posed this question in the past, we talk about climate change, we talk about other issues related to that, resiliency. I do not believe that is written in there properly, but you have the choice to pass this. I'm sure you're going to be amending it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open. Here are none. Back to council. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. At this time, we're still in a public hearing, discuss, take action on ordinance 1106. Jim?
Ordinance number 1106, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Section 30-416A and B11, Commercial District, Satellite Beach City Code, to authorize residential use as an accessory use with conditions, repealing Section 30-416 Sub C Sub 13 Satellite Beach City Code, which provided residential use as a conditional use and renumbering, amending Section 30-416 Sub E Sub 4 Satellite Beach City Code regarding maximum building height, amending Section 30-424 Sub C Satellite Beach City Code to provide for off-street parking regulations for mixed commercial residential development, providing severability, providing effective date, the second reading of ordinance number 1106.
Thank you.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further questions from council? Here are none. Open the floor at this time for public comment.
Ron Jagudis, resident, Satellite Beach. What is the amendment? Can somebody explain it as far as the height restriction easement? Thank you.
Courtney? Height restriction?
This has nothing to do with height.
Nothing to do with height. This is a mixed use.
That's correct.
It said mixed use, but isn't part of the resolution to ease the height? Was that not read?
Which provides residential use as a conditional use and renumbering, amending section City Code regarding maximum building height, amending section.
What is maximum building height, please?
35, is it not in that section?
It's renumbering.
Right, yeah.
The maximum building height.
35, 35.
Yes, 35 feet west of A1A and 65 feet east of A1A.
But is it, isn't the ordinance stating that it's going to amend it?
It's renumbering.
No, but I understand what he's asking. There was an issue regarding porches and that type of structures. I don't have the legislative one. They don't do that in the second reading. My recollection is it had to do with the porches and those types of issues.
Accessory residential structures?
Correct.
Thank you. Floor is still open?
We'll get that answered.
Here are none. Back to council. Further questions? Lenore?
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, I'll go back to council, discuss, take action on FY 2015, 2016 Employee Healthcare Plan Renewal. Courtney?
Every year, the city negotiates a healthcare renewal. Historically, we have always done that through our fully insured plan. Historically, you're always in a fully insured plan negotiating insurance increases in your rates. And the, in this year, many times when you get increases that are too high from your current carrier, then we rebid that. This year, we did do a bid. Our broker is Garing Group, and Sean Fleming is here, if we have questions that I can't answer. They bid these items out for us. So I'm going to just walk through what we're recommending, because we are recommending changing the way we pay for our insurance in terms of the model that we're using. And the current fully insured model is basically that we have insurance plans that are fully covered by the insurer, and basically, we every year pay a full premium to the carrier, and all billing and claims are handled by the insurance company. Any premium dollars that are paid above the actual amount of claims are held by the insurance company, so they get that as their profit. Conversely, though, the risk is also held by the insurance company rather than the city in terms of claims, and therefore, any claims that are over the total premium are paid by the insurance company, and that would be considered a loss for them. These are the increases that we have experienced each year in terms of the per-employee premium. So every year, we basically negotiate an increase with the current company, or we go out to bid. And historically, increases are not unusual, to be around anywhere from 8% to 12%. That's not unusual. And you can see in 1011, 2010, and 2011, that year, there was a 0% increase, and the reason why is because the city couldn't afford any increases, and instead made drastic changes to the healthcare plan to make it a 0% increase. So the employees experienced a major change to their benefits, a reduction in benefits, basically, in exchange for the city not having an increase that year. Keep, go back, sorry. You can see in 1314 is when we came, Andy and I, we pretty quickly brought Garing Group on board, and they have done a fantastic job for us, I think, with negotiating our rates. We, the first year, experienced a 2%, we went back to, we went out to bid, we moved to Cigna, and then the second year, Cigna gave us a 5% increase after Garing Group went back and negotiated that for us. And this year, I think they did even better. So you go to the next. And just to let you know, during the time that we're here, we were going through the Affordable Care Act, so insurance rates are just going through the roof. So, because insurance companies are now responsible for fees, extra costs relating to, you know, if you're required to insure somebody you previously would not insure, they spread that cost over to everyone else, and so everyone's rates were going up. So we were actually given a 14% increase by Health First our year, which is why we went out to bid, and I think Cocoa Beach experienced a 35% increase from Health First. So everyone was getting pretty bad insurance rates, and for us to come in with a 2% and a 5% was pretty remarkable, I think. Even so, we, what we want to do is make sure that we are not constantly changing companies, because that's also hard on the employee. You know, every time you get a new card, and you get a new number, and you get, you know, you have to fill out all the paperwork at the doctors again, and it's hard for them to manage that personally. So we want to make sure that we don't constantly do that to them, and so maintaining the same insurance companies and trying to work with them is also important. So we also are looking to see if we could do it a different way and make it cheaper in the long run, and also a way that would work well with the clinic model, which we're also trying to achieve. So we're looking at going to a partially self-insured model, which basically, in this case, the city would obtain assurance carrier to manage the administrative function of the claims management. So basically, they would do all the, they would still do what they do, but we would actually pay the claims. So they would manage the plan for us, and, you know, we don't want to be in the business of arguing with doctors. of arguing with doctors. So we don't do that. Plus, if you, you know, all insurance companies have rates that they negotiate with the doctors and the hospitals and all that. And so we want to capitalize on that as well. So Cigna is a very large insurance company and they have those specialized rates that we want to make sure we can still get. And in addition to that, so we would have, we would be paying claims, but we would also obtain individual stop-loss insurance. And we call it stop-loss, meaning you really stop the loss on an individual basis. So the insurance, we would basically pay insurance to pay out any claims over a set amount that we would set. And that's based on analysis of our past claims, which Garing Group did for us, and we'll go through that in a minute. And then we also obtain aggregate stop-loss, which means we would, the, this insurance would kick in if we get so many claims in a month, aggregate-wise, in that one-month period, that would be over what we could afford. So the city would create a claims fund and pay out claims on an individual basis unless the claims exceed an individual set amount, which is the individual stop-loss, or exceed the aggregate claims that we set for, for aggregate stop-loss. We would also carry terminal liability in our city reserves in the event that we move to another insurance company. So let's say we decide, oh, this isn't working with Cigna. Well, they're still going to get claims after we leave, you know, for, that we have to pay. So they want us to have money in reserves to make sure we can do that. So the bid results are in your packet. We received results for fully insured plans that ranged from a 4.5% increase to a 25.07% increases, increase for the year. Most of those bids included changes to our plan, basically making it worse. One did not, which was Florida Blue Care, and they had the lowest bid of 4.5%. But they are an HMO that just did not have the network that Cigna had in our area. So when we, when we're looking at providing a service to employees, providing them with the network that is unusable is, is also a hit to them in terms of benefit. We also very concerned with a bid that low going up because this is, what you received in your packet is the second go-around with, we, we first get the bid results back and then Garing Group takes those back and negotiates those down. During the time that we got the bid results back from, like, for, for Health First, they came in at 8%. Now they came in at 14% after they saw Cigna's bid. So they change, and they have those little caveats in there. So what, the last thing we want to do is go with the 4.5% that turns into 10 in two months, or by the end of the month when we're trying to negotiate. So we were very concerned with that. And we're also concerned with having to constantly change companies again. That's, that's something we're trying to avoid. So therefore, the graded funding renewal from Cigna was very attractive to us because this is the, this was the model that we were looking for in terms of partnering, you know, having the right insurance model with the clinic is very important. If you don't have a partially self-insured model, you're not going to save money with the clinic. So, so this graded funding renewal from Cigna will basically includes a plan upgrade on the maximum payout for prescriptions. So right now, there is no maximum payout for prescriptions. So if somebody gets a debilitating illness that requires a lot of prescriptions, they would just continue paying those copays until the end of day. But if, if it reaches 2,000 in the year, that's it. So there's a maximum payout now of 2,000. There are no other plan changes to the plan. Okay? It is a partially insured model, which is what we're looking for. And in this case, which is what Garing Group had recommended based on our claims history, that we get the aggregate stop, I mean, I'm sorry, and I put the wrong acronym there. The individual stop-loss is $30,000. So any claim that comes in over the amount of $30,000, this stop-loss insurance would kick in and pay for. And Sean, tell me if I do anything wrong, okay? For any claim in a one-month period, which is our aggregate stop-loss, this would be, the insurance would kick in after $69,138 of claims in one-month period. So what does that cost? In, in the, in this instance, we have three fixed costs under a partially insured plan. So it gets, um, it gets complicated, but for, for us, it would be, it gets cheaper. For fixed costs, we have an administration fee. So Cigna is asking for $81,992 to manage our healthcare plan for the year. The individual stop-loss insurance cost would be $282,492. And the aggregate stop-loss insurance cost would be $13,405.32. So those are our fixed costs. Okay? The thing about when you go into, um, well, I'll get to that in a minute. The next item is the variable cost, which is the claims. So that can, we can go up or down on that. The maximum exposure, if you will, that we could occur is the $743,234. Okay? If we were going to go and look at what our claims history would be, um, for the, for the expected claims liability, it would be $594,000, $593. That's, that's kind of like based on our history. So that would be expected. But the maximum, any cost would come to us liability-wise is that number of $743,234. Okay? We would also want to budget for the terminal liability, which is $125,735. Now, you don't really have to do that. I mean, you're still, you would be responsible for, if you ever left Cigna, but you don't really have to budget it for it today. We would recommend budgeting for that, just so you don't get surprised. So, so those would be the costs. So the staff would recommend creating a health insurance fund, and we'll talk about that during your budget presentation, to manage that partially self-insured model. And this would include the fixed costs as well as the variable cost. And we are recommending to fund the health insurance fund with the maximum claims liability and the maximum terminal liability reserves. And that's the most conservative way we could possibly do this without exposing ourselves to possible future costs this year. Okay? And this would require reserves to be moved from fund balance to the new health insurance fund, and that would be about $217,000. And you would want to do that because even though we're likely not going to hit that, you still want to make sure that you put that in your health insurance fund and start creating that fund, basically. We're, we're basically creating the future for that. And then, now, if you go back to the previous slide, the good thing about these graded funding plan costs is a lot of times when we're negotiating increases, like you just saw the 4% and the 20% or whatever, that's based on your, on our current premium, which is around in the 800,000. Now we're basing the, the rate increases on that fixed cost section right there. So that's, that's about half the cost there. So you're looking at increasing, you know, we're negotiating rate increases on half the amount of money now. So this, this works well with the clinic in that when you create the employee health clinic, as employees start using the clinic as their general physician, those claims stop hitting us on the claims fund. And you start saving that on that side. And your stop-loss insurance and all that, those, those things go down because you're not hitting those claims. Okay? And you're not having, we're just, and that's basically where you save the money, with the clinic idea. And you're basically, with the clinic, you're cutting out all of those increases that you can receive. So with that presentation, and I'm going to ask Sean to come up here and sit here in case you guys have any questions. What we're asking for is your approval for that bid result with the Cigna graded funding as negotiated by Garing Group. And then allow me to, to, you know, sign all the paperwork and make sure we are able to get that renewal.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Courtney, I guess, one more question. How do you project costs in the future? I mean, is there, is there a way that you can look at the costs and project what they're going to come in the future as far as annually?
Good evening, Sean Fleming with the Garing Group. Excellent question. So in, in the current program that you're in right now, we really don't get claims data. So with this, one of the nice benefits is we're actually going to see on a monthly basis how much is being spent, where it's occurring. You know, is it hospital, prescription, doctors? So we'll actually be able to use some of the techniques for forecasting, doing trend projections that larger groups are able to do right now because they get the claims data that you guys aren't. So in the future, when we're looking at increases, we'll actually have a little bit more science and numbers behind it, where right now, you're kind of at the mercy of the insurance carrier based on what they want to give you.
Okay.
That was a hard adjustment for me when I first started here, was because we are such, we're such a smaller city than my previous city. We, I was expecting that, of, where's the claims data? And, and they wouldn't give it to us because we're too small. So when we did this, we received a report on our claims, but there was no individual claim data that was given to us.
And as, as far as forecasting, I'm not sure I'm going to ask, ask this question right. I guess there's different demographics. Some cities have a different population of employees versus others and that sort of thing. So I would, I would guess, Sean, that some of your forecasting in the future is going to try to match us with like-sized cities and so we're not being compared to Denver, Colorado type of thing.
Exactly. Most of the forecasting and the trending that you're going to see is going to be based on other groups in Florida. Obviously, you know, one of the biggest things that, that can drive costs on a group's size and city manager talked a lot about that $30,000 of protection is some of those catastrophic claims. And unfortunately, catastrophic claims, whether it's cancer or certain things like that, they really don't discriminate based on the size of the employer. You know, it's just as easy for somebody to get cancer that they work at the county or at city, at Satellite Beach or the school district. But we're able to use both a combination, really, of your actual data and then also data from, you know, the, the pool or the book of the insurance company. And what we'll do is we'll blend that going forward. So you could have a great year, but that doesn't mean that, you know, a group your size isn't going to have X number of cancers in a 24-month period and X number of heart attacks. So we look at both, you know, knowing that, to really try and balance that out and make the most educated forecast going forward.
Great. Thanks, sir. Further questions?
At this time, open up for public hearing on this agenda item.
Ron Dragutis, resident Satellite Beach. I doubt three minutes will be able to be answered anything. First of all, we have a budget, and thank you for the budget booklet, the previous meeting, city manager. However, I did recognize we set up a health insurance fund now going forward that is in the, on the website. Please, can we have a little more clarity in there? We're talking about a health insurance fund for 1.2, roughly $1.2 million and a potential contribution of, I'm going to round the number, 2.25 from potential reserves or 2.20. What's $5,000? That's not a big difference, 10,000. But we had that coming on, and this was never discussed during previous budget talks. It was coming up. We're going to have a first reading, and we've got this to deal with. Now, as I look at one of the pages for the city of Satellite Beach from Garing Group, apparently, the current plan was costing us $950 a year. Fully insured renewal is 1.2. The negotiated graded funding renewal is 1.207. And I'm assuming I'm looking at the correct column there, 1.207. Does that include the $84,000 roughly for claims? Does that include the additional monies we need to spend to put in reserves to potentially pay claims?
Yes, sir. That's, that's an all-inclusive cost.
The 1.207 includes the $84,000?
Yes, sir. That is the all-inclusive cost.
Okay. And how long is this rate good for? I will assume that it's for 12 months. We don't know what's going to be happening next year again.
Yes, sir.
Because it's up for renegotiation. The expectation is that it's going to be lesser of an expense. So...
Correct? I'm not sure I understand the second part of your question. All of the rates are proposed for a 12-month period.
That's correct. But we don't know the potential for increase for the following 12 months.
No, sir. With none of the, with none of the programs.
Correct. None of the programs offer that and can't. And now, the 1.207 that we have versus the 1.208, we've got variable costs in there, the 1.208 is fully funded. The 1.207 includes the $84,000 or $85,000 plus the additional reserves. The additional cost will be the clinic.
Mr. Dragutis, could you please wrap up the three-minute timeframe? Buzzers just went off.
What is, is that cost for the clinic is not included yet in that 1.207? That's going to be an additional cost, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
And I, I'm very disappointed that I only have three minutes to delve into a potential issue of this size, but it is what it is. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Floor is still open? Hearing no further comment on agenda item 10. I'll bring it back to council. Questions?
So we're in a step program here, what it looks like to me, is that we're starting this in anticipation and hope that we do a clinic to help offset the rising cost of healthcare every year.
Yes, sir.
And basically, we're playing a game, not a game, but they're saying, percentage-wise, we feel we will be at least equal to this as we are in our last plan, but this is what we have to do if we're going to go to the health clinic portion.
If we're going to save any money.
Save money.
And I, and that's just, I don't want to say, saving the money, saving money is probably a bad way to put that.
At least not get the increase.
Reducing our annual increases is the best way to say that.
And if I could just add, add one thing to that, if you look at the numbers that the gentleman brought up, the 1.207 versus 2.08, regardless of, of clinic and where that goes in the future, with the, with the fully insured renewal, you're paying the carrier that money, and it's gone. With the renewal, with the graded funded, your maximum, yes, it's exactly in the same place, but there's a potential that we could come back to you next year and tell you that you saved $300,000, $400,000. With the other plan, you know, so we're talking such a minimal difference, there's no reason clinic or not in the future that you would want to pass up on that opportunity at the same price level. If it was 15 or 20% higher and we were talking about taking 15 or 20% more risk for that rate, we might be having a, a different discussion, but with the numbers being so placed, so close, it only makes sense to be able to save that.
Thank you. Questions? No more here? Further question? Do you think, do I have a motion?
The motion to approve grading fund renewal option?
Grading fund renewal option for healthcare for 2015, 2016?
I'll make, I'll second it.
I have a motion by councilman Osmer, second by vice mayor Montanaro. Do I have further discussion from the council?
All I can say is, these prices are looking pretty good against, I just got mine, which is going from 450 to 850 for next year, per month.
I don't think it's anything that's going to be...
This is looking good for me.
...increasing rapidly and saying we've got to, I think, do our best to minimize the percent that it goes up each year. So, and, so, thank you. Lenar? I think no further discussion? Lenar?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Staff?
Thank you very much for the time and effort. I know this was a lot of...
Thank you very much for the time and effort. I know this was a lot of work, and I appreciate it very much. I know the council does. Okay. At this time, moving on to Agenda Item 11, the FY 2015-16 budget. And at this time, Part A, I'll open up a public hearing on the proposed FY 2015-2016 budget.
Do you want him to read?
That's Part B, right? You want to do your presentation?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. The, we, we actually just framed this presentation on the changes from the proposed budget to the adopted budget. So the major changes from the proposed budget include, we did negotiate with the unions, and they have allowed the, the city to apply the full amount of the 1.75, 1.85 insurance tax payment to the city, and apply that payment to the city's pension contribution for police and fire. What that does is it frees up general fund money that would normally be paying on the contribution. And that allowed us to implement the compression increases for employees. We, we, in the proposed budget, you had a four-year implementation timeframe, and in the adopted budget, they're representing to you now, it, there's a three-year implementation timeframe. So we have not ratified the contracts with the unions yet, but we have tentatively agreed on those sections. So we're, so, they were very easy negotiations this year. They were, uh, basically very easy to, to work with, and so we want to thank you all if you're here. The next one is we, go ahead and switch slides. We included a health insurance fund for the partially self-insured model, the graded funding plan by Cigna. So if you go to your budget and you look at your funds... I'm sorry, I'm getting there. Page 78, you'll see the revenues for the health insurance fund. Just the transfer from general fund from the, for the city cost of the health plan.
Okay.
Of $808,585. The transfer of the employee cost for that, of $173,733, that's the share of the employees that have dependent coverage. The share of the retiree cost that they pay to us for their, their plan, $6,292. And then also our cost for the retirees, which is $533. And then you see the supplemental funding, this is the money that we were pulling in from reserves of $217,915. And that shouldn't come as a surprise. We've been talking about moving, building our reserves very quickly, and part of that reason is, is to start this strategy. Okay? If you go to the next page, you'll see the expenses. So you'll see the insurance costs, professional services, working capital, and then the addition to reserves, which, the addition to reserves here is the terminal liability that I discussed earlier. Okay? If you go to the next slide, we will, those, so those are the major changes, basically. I did want to take a moment, because I heard the soccer people were going to be here. It's a small town. And give them a big thank you for being partners with us. We have included many capital improvement projects in our budget this year, which included, we're renovating Roosevelt. We're street, repaving a lot of streets throughout the city. And part of that is lighting the soccer field. And we received a $10,000 donation from the soccer league, which we very much appreciate, which enabled us to do a lot of the electric and things like that, and also part of our match. So we did, that helped us get to the point where we're at today. I also wanted to commend the Women's Club for Shell Street donation of $150,000. And this allowed us to complete that project as designed by the community. It was budgeted for only $400,000 and came in much higher. So instead of having to take that design down, we were able to complete it. And then, because that, those funds from the CRA went back to the taxing authorities, part of that, if you look at your budget, I'll point it out to you, since there seems to be an issue here with that donation. If you go to page 63, you'll see a transfer to capital assets fund. And that's of $178,870. That's the transfer from the CRA, the money going back to the taxing authorities. And that was transferred right into capital assets to complete projects like the soccer field lighting and the skate park renovations, which we also have programmed for $200,000. So without, you know, without these donations, we would not be able to re-prioritize our CIP and get some of these things done, which we were, it, it all kind of came together this year with the community and with, with, you know, with the, just with the major renovations throughout the city that we're trying to do. And if you go to the next slide, we created a community paramedic program. Did the fire chief, or does that, he's back there? And he's very successful at getting money, if you haven't, if you see this. We received $7,233.57 from numerous community members, including our churches with the Easter donations, and then individual donors, that are individuals, that brought in all the, just donation after donation. And I just think that's just phenomenal. I mean, without, without that, we wouldn't be able to buy the equipment that we needed for that program. So we, that entire program was started within the original budget of the fire department. And we have added no other tax dollars to that budget. So it's been done completely on the generosity with the community. So I just wanted to say thank you all. We appreciate it. And without you, we wouldn't be able to get the things we're doing done today.
Courtney, staff, thank you very, very much. At this time, I think I'll take each individual, A, B, and C, to discuss and open up for public comment, if that's the wishes of them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for City Manager at this time?
No.
Okay. Open up the public hearing on Part A, the proposed budget for the 2015-16.
As easy as...
Right here, buddy. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and Courtney, thank you so much. I'm Joel Wilson, the President of the Satellite Beach Soccer Club, and we're really here tonight to say thank you for supporting the library lighting project. It's incredibly important to the continued growth and development of our soccer club and soccer in Satellite Beach. I don't know if you would have any reason to be aware, but our club, about six seasons ago, was serving 250 children every season. And we've had such large percentage growth each season for the last six, that now we have over 500 kids who are descending on the library fields. It's a tremendous amount of growth at a time when other soccer clubs in the county are growing by combining with other clubs. We're growing by continuing to recruit from our own community and growing those kids into competitive and fun soccer players. We're very fortunate to have a long history with soccer players like Women's National Team Goalkeeper Ashlyn Harris, who, you know, we're incredibly pleased and proud that, you know, she comes from our town and from our soccer club. And at the moment, we have many extremely competitive teams that are ranked in the, you know, single digits in the state. But for us, our soccer club is about developing future community leaders. And we look at soccer as just one aspect of helping to develop well-rounded kids who are going to give back to our community. We appreciate that lighting the fields allows us to offer, give the opportunity to play soccer longer and for a wider variety of kids. The drawback of having so many kids on the field is that we run out of space for them. So our solutions are either to find new space or to create more time in the day. And creating more time in the day is what, is a fantastic solution for us. Very much thanks from our club for Carrie Stoms, who has gone far out of her way, and the other recreational partners with the city who have made baseball and softball fields available to us in their off-seasons. But we very much appreciate how difficult it can be to find space in a budget this complex for this kind of project. So we appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for working with us and being such supporters of the rec program here. And, you know, working together sure makes things a lot easier. And thank you. We appreciate it. Floor's still open.
Ron Trigutis, Satellite Beach resident. Thank you, Soccer Club. Thank you for all the work you do here. Not only do you deserve the lighting, you should have deserved it years and years ago. And now I come back, back to the budget, whatever the sections are noted. We have workshops. I have heartburn, how the health insurance fund appears magically during the first reading. And I think citizens deserve better, as well as you deserve better, that it's brought out sooner than later. Has an informed decision been made? Maybe. And I say maybe. Therefore, I do not agree with this current budget. And I further disagree with how it's, got slipped out today, the remaining items. And I stand by my convictions, as you well heard, Mr. Mayor, the last time I was here. I still stand by that conviction, and I'm not going to back down from that. Thank you, and good night.
Good night. Thank you very much. Public comment portion for Agenda Item 11A is still open. Hearing no further. Bring it back to council. I'd just like to want to say one thing about lights and also the health care. First, on the health care, the number of hours that has been spent by our staff on health care is just incredible. From day one, when Andy and Courtney came in, it was one of the big items that they had to take a look at. It's a huge portion of our budget, and each of our lives is a huge portion of our expenses daily, where we work, the portions we have to pay. And we want to provide, just because someone's an employee of a governmental agency or works for a city, doesn't make him any less of a person or deserves any less treatment on a good health care and service. And that's all we're trying to provide, provide our residents with affordable health, our, excuse me, people that work for the city with affordable health care, and do it at the best way we possibly can financially for our city and those employees. And this is not something that's been thrown up. It's been in the works for a long time. And it just culminated now, in this budget cycle, that we could implement it. And we are trying to save the citizens of this town and be as financially responsible as we possibly can on an item that's extremely expensive. And no matter if it's in the private sector or in the government sector, I don't know of insurances that are drastically dropping. And we're trying to keep it as affordable as we possibly can. Lights. Lights. It brings community. Yes, we should have done it long ago, this project. The field at the library complex, even from day one, is always planned to have lights. And if you don't believe lights add to the community, watch when they get turned on. And parents come out, kids, people become a community. And hopefully, we can light more real soon.
Well, by the way, the mayor said, "Put the lights in the budget," so, so we did do that.
There was a sign from the gentleman, his picture's in the back. Because I sat a lot of times in this office, sometimes good, sometimes not quite so good. But there was a sign that said, "Put a, put a ball in a kid's hand and take the fork out." And, you know, Recreation Day, and put it on their foot.
I, I just wanted, before you vote on the budget, just to mention that this budget does include a 2% increase for the, for our staff. They also, which is pretty modest, actually, but it also includes their compression raises, which we've been trying to address since Andy and I have gotten here. And so this is a good, they're also experiencing no increases in health care costs this year. So that's a good budget year for them. But I wanted, there, there are some employees out here to support you in this budget. And I wanted to acknowledge them and just say that, you know, they deserve everything that's in this budget and more. They've done a great job. We're very lucky to have all of them working for us. We have a wonderful staff here that goes above and beyond every day. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the second part of Agenda 11B, Ordinance Number 1109. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1109, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final levying of adware and taxes by establishing operating millage rate of 8.29 mils for fiscal year 2015-2016, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance 1109.
Motion to approve Ordinance Number 1109 on first reading? I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer, to approve Ordinance 1109 on first reading. Comments from council? Hearing none. Open up Portion B to public comments. Hearing none. Bring it back to council. Further comments? Hearing none. Lenore?
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Oster?
Yes.
Senator Breimer?
Yes.
Eric Tino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to 11C, Ordinance Number 1110. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1110, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting FY 2015-2016 budget, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance 1110.
Motion to approve Ordinance Number 1110 on first reading?
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro, to adopt the, ordinance 1110 on first reading. Further comments from council? Hearing none. Open up for public portion of Agenda Item 11C. Hearing none. Back to council?
I just want to thank Andy and Jennifer and Courtney for putting this together with the other department heads. This is a great budget. You guys did a lot of work. Our employees deserve the compression raises that they're getting. They also deserve the 2%. I wish it could be higher. But, you know, the constraints that we have been dealing with in our city have, you know, placed a lot of burden on, on Courtney to come up with a budget that we, as a council, could, could adopt. And, you know, our citizens do deserve better. And we are doing these things, the insurance, because these are a way of lowering costs for our residents. Ultimately, health care costs are going to do nothing but continue to go up. And, and we're looking at different ideas to continue to provide for our residents, provide for our employees, and we're trying to do them smarter. We're trying to think outside the box. And these are things that we're doing to make it easier for us to provide for our residents and our employees. So I, I, I thank you.
Courtney, thank you very much. I know when, when Andy stepped in, the unrestricted reserve in this town was basically zero. From almost $1,300,000 to zero. The state recommends that, you know, you need almost six months of expenses in reserve. We built it up fast, and we've been able to do projects and also, and with your guidance, Andy and Courtney and the staff. Thank you very much, because we can continue to add to a great community that we have. And thank you for your hard work, and all the employees of the city. Thank you very much. We've got a lot of great departments, and unfortunately, I don't think you can retire.
Mr. Mayor, hi. First of all, talking about the 8.29 mils, as compared to last, last year, that is what? Less?
Slower, yes.
So that was something that was brought to us at one time. Could we lower it anything? I think they didn't care if it was .0001. I think the comment was. So let the record reflect that the millage has gone down, tax rate has gone down. Just want to make sure that we point that out there. Also, I'd like to say, the nice part about what the staff has done, especially with the budget and with the health care stuff, is you made it understandable. My budget isn't that easy to read. So I compliment the staff and everybody for putting together a budget, something that's easy to understand for most people to be able to read it and get out of it what the true meaning of it is. Also, you know, I'm, I'm very happy that the city employees are getting what they deserve. And I can tell you from the flip side, because I found this out today, that there are union members right now at KSC that... members right now at KSC that lost two dollars an hour, they lost a holiday, they lost a floating holiday, just so they could keep their contract and keep their jobs. So, when you're talking about time when people are getting a two percent raise, which I know does not seem much, but on the flip side, we're still in an economy where people were losing, and these were the union folks, they lost two dollars an hour and two paid holidays that they were getting in order to try to keep a job. So, it's not all rosy for everybody out there, but the staff is definitely deserving of it. I'm very happy to see that they are, that they are getting it, and we're able to hopefully keep this, on this trend of making things better for them.
Thank you very much. Further questions? Mark?
I just want to say, Carrie and Alan, you know, when a soccer club grows like it's grown over that period of time, you guys are doing something right, and then you're able to keep in this community and not combine with other clubs. So, I just want to thank you both for everything you do, because I know it's a lot of work to do that, Carrie, and experience that growth. So, both of you, thank you very much.
Okay. No further comments? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes. Motion passes. Everyone, thank you very much for your hard work, and at this time, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the council meeting, and go on to agenda item twelve, appointments to boards.
Want to start with reappointments?
Please.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Brenda Sputter to the library board as primary member, term ending ten-five-eighteen, and also Clint Brasswell to the recreation board as a primary member, term ending ten-three-eighteen, and Brian Gilcher to the Sampson's Island Working Board as a primary member, term ending ten-three-eighteen, and Salvatore Lorasella in the Sampson's Island Working Board, primary member, term ending ten-three-eighteen.
Okay. I have a second. Second. Mark, you have a second? Yes, sir. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Any discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes. Motion passes. No appointments?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donnie Tort to the general employees pension plan board of trustees as a primary member, term ending nine-two-eighteen.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Is that... Okay. Further discussion? Lenore?
I'm sorry, you said Osmer motion.
Yeah, Dave.
Hold on a minute. A second?
Yes. No, other way. A motion was by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by...
I'm sorry. Okay. Osmer.
Boom.
Mark Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Chairman, Mayor Cino?
Yes. Thank you very much. Move on to agenda item thirteen, regular proposed agenda item for our next September sixteenth council meeting. Again, like we, I say, at each meeting, if anything you would like to see on this agenda that's not on it, please contact the city manager. Moving on to agenda item fourteen, adoption minutes for July twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen special meeting, and the August twentieth, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor...
As submitted.
Thank you.
I'll amend my motion, yes.
Thank you. Any questions? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brei... Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes. Motion passes. Any further business before council? To everyone that came tonight, thank you very much for your support, and to the soccer club, great year, thanks. Appreciate it and good luck. Lot of kids, beautiful. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
You have to turn your budgets.